Welcome, welcome everyone, Department Heads, Council Members and our general public to the City of Lackawanna Caucus for Monday, March 14th, 2022. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Ifal for your state of the city presentation. We'd like to thank you for your stewardship, your forward thinking and your vision. You've touched on some exciting and very positive and strong indicators of the economic health and progress and viability our city is enjoying under your stewardship, Mayor Ifal. So, thank you so much. In addition to that, now I'll mention this again during the regular meeting. I'd like to welcome two new members of our City Hall staff, our new City Controller, Linda Marie Hibicki, and our new Director of Development, Lauren Jednick. So, we'd like to welcome both of you. Hopefully, you're tuning in. Unless there's anything further, the caucus is the City Council's opportunity to explore, question, examine the various agenda items for tonight's agenda. That meeting will start directly after our caucus ends. In looking at the agenda, the initial items includes including approval of minutes and departmental reports are administrative. So, move right to item number five, communication from the mayor. From Mayor Ifal, request City Council pass a task resolution supporting bill number S-7602. It's indicated the donor conceived persons protection bill. It's sponsored by Senator Patrick Galavan, and it supports the reproductive contributors and recipients of any future health questions or issues that might come up. And this is more of a disclosure, it's my understanding. Does anyone have any comments or questions on item number five? All right, moving to item number six from Director Laxo, Department of Recreation, regarding lawn cutting and landscaping bids. Director Laxo, did you review the the individual bids and do you have a recommendation?
I do. We have bids from two different companies and although one is a bit lower than the other, the the Snowplow Doctor who has been doing our work for the last few years is still going to be my recommendation. And if you want me to elaborate on my reasons why I will.
Well, does any of the council members have any questions for Director Laxo?
Brian, are the prices that are listed the bid price for the duration of the summer?
Yes, the the prices that are listed for each ward are the weekly costs. They generally move along once a week at each location. And if, I'm sorry. I thought I heard someone say something. The cost per cut, if we go with the Snowplow Doctor, let me find my paperwork here. It's going to be $126 more expensive to go with them each week. And if you extrapolate that over the course of the the cutting season, last year we had 30 weeks where we required this service. It's a difference of $3,780. So, one would cost us 14, or $48,420, and the other would cost us $52,200. The reason I'm still recommending the more expensive option is their track record of exemplary service. And frankly, other agencies that have been hired in the past prior to my arrival have required relief duty by the Snowplow Doctor to redo areas that were inadequate inadequately serviced the first time. So, for us to spend $48,500 and not have the certainty that we have with the quality of work that we've been getting for a few dollars more, I think it makes sense to to stick with what we know is a known quantity and a known quality.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone have any other questions of Director Laxo?
If I may, Mr. Council President, Brian, what's your what's your yearly total for the Snowplow Doctor? So I could fill in the blank here.
This is again an estimate because we're working off of 30, 30 sessions last last year. But my my estimate at 30, 30 cuts over the course of the year, two fiscal years, but over the course of this 2022, Snowplow Doctors, $52,200, and Emerald Dunes is $48,420.
All right, so I'll just note in here with an asterisk that that's estimated.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Director Laxo. Item number seven from Commissioner DeSantis from the DPW, requesting the City Council approve the proposed code enforcement fee updates. Anyone have any questions on that item?
Are these fees that are rendered onto the property owners, both commercial and residential?
It's my understanding that, yes.
This is Scott Hayes, Code Enforcement for the City of Lackawanna. It is fees, they're fees for fines for problems with the property, any residential or commercial property. If we send them a violation and they don't contact us back or get ahold of us.
How often has this fee increase occur?
It has not increased since, I think, do believe, 1987?
Yeah, I believe Director Stanton made a whole presentation on that last year that our fees really needed to be updated. And I just think this is an extension of that. I think it's necessary. Anyone else have any questions?
I still have a few questions. So, looking at over the proposal. So, we're compounding all of the fees that haven't been incurred since 1987 all at one time rather than us gradually. Like for one, for instance, one of them was $15 and then it goes up to $50. Whereas had it incrementally increased, it wouldn't be such a burden on homeowners who already find it difficult to fill their gas tanks. I'm just looking at it from an inflation standpoint where right now our residents are already suffering financially enough and then compounded with these fees that may just take them over the edge.
The fees don't hit everyone, right, Scott?
They do not hit everyone. The one that went from $15 to $50, I talked to two other towns, Hamburg and Depew, and one of them charges $50 for a zoning compliance fee, which I have to review all their forms and stuff like that in any folders that we have. And Hamburg charges 75 for that. So, from going from $15, it could take me two to three hours to get this information before I send them a letter. And I do believe $50 was the lower cost of the two towns I was talking to.
Don't do the crime, can't do the time.
Yeah, that's that's not even the ticket fees. These are just when a landlord requests a zoning letter so they could sell the property and make sure it's zoned properly. The one for 15, the fifth, that's moving to 50. That's not the ticket fees.
Also too, I know smaller fees, these code enforcement guys are writing tickets out. There are some landlords and homeowner rental property owners that rather just pay the small $15 than get whatever's wrong fixed. So, I really believe that this is a good thing.
Absolutely. In addition to that, we've experienced a lot of problems with our housing and our code violations to the detriment of the other members of the of the public to keep their property in good condition. So, I don't have any sympathy for for somebody who's in violation or has been making money off the city or off of residents of our city. If they're not local landlords or or property owners, I feel it's justified. And if it hadn't been increased since 1987, I think it's well overdue.
How how long are they given before they are fined?
For like grass and garbage? If there's garbage at the curb, normally we just, we fine them. Because I look back in our history, I've been here three years. And if I find them and gave them a warning before, I just give them a ticket because they know that they've already been got a warning or a fine from the past previous three years.
Okay.
Mr. Council President, Kevin Surik. I agree with you. We had to put some bite in these fines here because we've been fighting this for the last four or five years, trying to put some teeth into our codes. And if you take care of your property, that's no problem. But I have people calling me from the fourth ward, their neighbors got stuff all over, garbage, this and that. And it's it's it brings down the neighborhood. So, I have no problem. I'm voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Surik. And on a separate note to our code enforcement officers, Scott Hayes, Scott, welcome back. Hopefully, you're ready to go and hit the hit the street, hit the pavement running. You may be aware of two communications recently received today on on Cook Street and on Ingham Avenue. Hopefully, you'll take a look at those as soon as you can.
Yes, I've already looked at. I've researched the Ingham property and the other property at the end of Cook. I've already did research and we have replied to.
There's one on Edna too.
I'm sorry?
One on Edna Street?
Yes, nine, at the end of Cook and Edna is the same thing. Same property.
Thanks. Okay, thanks, Scott. Anyone else? All right. Item number eight, again from our DPW Commissioner DeSantis. There is, so he's looking to partner with City of Buffalo relative to repaving Dorance Avenue for the tune of our share of $85,000. Tony, I don't know if you want to get into any of the specifics or if there are any specific questions for Commissioner DeSantis.
We've done this before with Buffalo and part of Dorance Avenue was that's from McKinley to South Shore two years ago. And actually, they paved the other side of Abbott Road. They they did both sides when they weren't supposed to. So, actually, they paved our side of the road and we didn't have to pay anything for that. So, I think it's only fair we partner up this time with Buffalo to finish off Dorance, which is Dorance and South Park is probably the worst intersection in that area. So,
I have a question for Department of Public Works. Does Buffalo consider Dorance Avenue a commercial route?
I don't have an answer to that question. I don't think so. That street.
Yeah, this is something we've been, Jim Buck and myself have been working on this for about two and a half years now. And he was told that Buffalo said it's it's a commercial route, which is really beats up that road really bad. And the residents there are dealing with the the noise of the trucks bouncing around all over the place. And it's it's become a terrible problem. So, I'm not sure if it is a commercial route. There is, there are signs of, you know, five ton limit, but trucks still go down there. I know Director of Public Safety targeted the old Sorrento Cheese and talked to them, telling them drive, the drivers not to go down there and not to go down door or McKinley Parkway either. So, you know, it is a problem. And I know our police department has pulled over trucks on South Shore, on the north end of South Shore, big semis and, you know, to give them tickets. So, I was just curious if that is a, they consider that a commercial road or not?
I don't have the answer to that question. I don't believe so, but it's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't didn't we put signs up there a couple of years ago, Tony?
Yeah, we have them on our side. We have weight limit signs on ours.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, so, okay.
Okay, anyone else? All right, moving on to the next item, it's not numbered, but it's communication from Director Wolf, Director of Public Safety regarding the permission to use a pumper truck to participate in the Old First Ward St. Patrick's Day Parade with the City of Buffalo on March 19. Anyone have any questions on that or Director Wolf, if you have any comments? Right, moving on to the next item, again from Public Safety Director Wolf. Pressing City Council approved the first ever law enforcement torch run walk to benefit Special Olympics in New York State. 2022 Lackawanna leg of the run walks will be held on Sunday, May 22nd, 2022. Anyone have any questions or comments on that issue? Or again, Director Wolf, if you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, Council President, I I didn't get off mute fast enough. I don't I don't have anything on the first one. We've used the pumper truck every year for God knows how long. It's about four hours. It's a nice thing. And this is being handled by a couple of members of the police department, setting this whole thing up. So, if anyone has more questions on the torch run, just give me a little bit of time, another couple of weeks, and we'll have it a little bit more nailed down the court, you know, the where it's going to go and and what we need to get done.
If I may, for a moment, Mr. President, Director Wolf, I just wanted to let you know I did speak with one of the officers regarding this event. They inquired about the use of the senior center. That portion of the proposal is all clear on my department's end. So, that's one hurdle less that you guys have to deal with. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Ah, very good. Thank you, Brian.
All right, anyone else have any questions for Director Wolf? All right, thank you, Director Wolf. Moving on to item number nine from our city attorney, request City Council approve and authorize execution of a memorandum of understanding regarding the K-9 patrol officer for the Lackawanna Police Department. The complete text of the memorandum of understanding is on file at the clerk's office. I don't know if our city attorney, Judah, is present or I believe our assistant city attorney, Ms. Baummeister, may be present. I don't know if either wish to.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm here. So, in the past several years, we've had K-9 officers and it was never a written agreement negotiated with their union as to what type of money they should be paid because they basically caring for the dog 24/7. I believe the prior officer was Officer Sewicki. And under the previous administration, he received a small stipend to take care of the dog. So, basically, I researched the law a little bit and came up with this short agreement that the union is willing to accept. And it will compensate the police officer who now handles, I believe we have one K-9, and it will, you know, it basically obligates us to to pay this small stipend to that officer to cover basically food and and exercise and and all the things that you do with a with a with a dog when when you're not working. So, other municipalities are doing it and I think it's a fair, it's fair for the city under the circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Judah. Anyone have any questions on that item?
Prior, were the were the police officers being out of pocket for the maintenance of the K-9s?
Well, in it, like I said, in the prior administration, Officer Sewicki was getting a small stipend. It wasn't as as large as this one. I I think the money, the money's not the big issue. I think it's the time. And and this, this gives the officer not only money for food and 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 whatever else the dog might need, baths and and things like that. But it also provides the officer with with probably our obligation under the Fair Labor Standards Act to compensate that officer with some type of time for the amount of time he spends while off duty with the animal, so.
And along those same lines, Rick, who who pays the veterinary bills?
We do.
The city.
City does, yes.
And that would be in addition to.
Right in here.
What this coverage, right?
Yes, it would be in addition.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Judah on this item?
It says any and all other expenses must be approved by the Chief of Police. The the officer gets a 250 stipend and all expenses for veterinary care will be borne by the city. So.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Moving on to item number 10 from the City Controller. But City Council approved attached budget ordinance, transferring funds for agenda item number eight, the $85,000 for our partnership with the City of Buffalo and repaving Dorance Avenue. Anyone have any questions on that item? All right, moving on to item 11, again from Controller Hibicki, request City Council approve attached budget ordinance to close out the Milnor and Keever paving capital project and return funds to the general fund. The indication is that we receive TDBG block grants totaling over $200,000. Anyone have any comments on that item? All right, moving on to item number 12, a communication from Citizens, John Farrell, regarding.
Ain't it?
Sorry?
That's number 14. I don't know where you got your numbers wrong there somewhere.
Well, it says number 12 on my sheet.
If I may, Mr.
You know what, Kevin, the other two items weren't marked, weren't numbered, so maybe that's where it comes in.
If I could just chime in here for a quick second. Somehow during the the original agenda and the final agenda that you got two items, both from the Director of Public Safety, were not identified with a number. So, item, the first Director of Public Safety should be number nine. The second Director of Public Safety should be number 10. And right in order, right through to 14, as Councilman Surik said, that's how the communications that are attached are numbered. So, if you just want to mark the modified agenda, the Director of Public Safety, the first one is number nine. The second one is number 10, and then each one is is increased by two, right through to number 14. So, sorry about that. I don't know how that happened, but it did.
Okay, I believe every other council member's had a chance to read Mr. Farrell's letter regarding the new policy at Erie County Fair. I don't know if anyone has any public comments on that particular item. Now, moving on to business registrations. Joseph Aderno, Patjo Niersonian, Roberts Cefalu, Kevin Lassie Trilio, Mahir Nasr, and Michelle Wright Sands. Anyone have any particular issues on any one of those business registration requests?
Yeah, on that warehouse, the part part number two, that's just going to be a parts store. There's not going to be a junkyard there or any parts taken off of old cars or anything like that.
That is part of.
I don't know.
Familiar with that application?
This is Scott Hayes, Code Enforcement. Part of 1212 Abbott Road, the back part of the old Atkins Ford. And it's not going to be, it's not going to be a junkyard. It's just new parts. It's a, it's a company that moved from Toronto that's just trying to expand in this area. He does have zoning board and planning board approval.
Council President, I have a question. 12, this is what. 1212 Abbott Road, that's at the beginning of a plaza there, right on the corner of Dorance and Abbott. Now, there's there's businesses been running out of there for quite a while. Were they all registered or are some of these businesses in there already and they weren't registered? You know, off the end. Scott?
They have been through zoning and planning board approval. They just never went to the clerk's office to file for their business registrations.
Okay.
So, we we've contacted them and told them that they needed their business registration.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Anyone else have any questions on these items? If not, then let's move into our regular council meeting. I do hereby formally call to order a regular council meeting for Monday, March 14th, 2022. And I would ask that everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United America and to the Republic of the one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
Thank you. Before we begin with the role, again, I was, I indicated earlier, I would mention this. I'd like to thank Mayor Ifal for your state of the city presentation as well as to thank you for your stewardship during this time period, your forward thinking and your vision. You pointed out in your presentations, very positive and strong indicators of our city's economic health and viability, and we are greatly encouraged by that. So, thank you, Mayor Ifal. Further for our public, if they're just tuning in, we do have two members, staff members at City Hall. Our first is our new controller, Linda Marie Hibicki. We'd like to welcome her. And our new Director of Development, Lauren Jednick, and we'd like to welcome her. Mr. City Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Council President. Council Muflahe.
Present.
Anderson?
Here.
Moretti?
Here.
Surik?
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Here.
Department has law?
Here.
Development?
Here.
Public Works?
Here.
Public Safety?
Here.
Controller?
Here.
Creation?
Here.
Public Information?
Here.
On hearings from Citizens, Mr. Council President, do you want the two emails that we received over the weekend, received and filed, are they an agenda item for discussion or are you going to just deal with them privately?
Well, since they weren't, we didn't receive them on a timely basis in time for the agenda, correct?
Well, when you, when we agreed to do the zone meetings, we've allowed them, just as just citizens, mind you, to submit things up to 12 o'clock the day of the meeting. And they submitted these over the weekend. And we did, we did get them, they were sent to me past the deadline. But looking at the emails, the emails were actually sent on Friday after business hours and on Saturday. So, based on our Zoom rules, they are timely. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that the submitters requested them to be on the agenda because they haven't. So, I don't know if you just want to leave them as communications internally or if you want to go over them.
Oh, let's leave them as communications internally. They've already been directed to the appropriate parties for follow up as far as the complaints are concerned. So, in the future, if there's any need to revisit those particular items, perhaps they can become a an agenda item in the future if there's follow up required.
All right, with that, I need the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 28th, 2022.
Wait, on the question, on the question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, on the first page, when we approved the resolution waiving the residency on a communication from the mayor, it says Director, it says City Controller on the front page here for Lauren, it should read Director of Development.
Yeah, that might might have made it been a typograph. Uh, yeah, that might, might have made it been a typographical error. Is that on the minutes, Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll note that for the record. Um, needs to be corrected.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Miranda moves to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two as written.
All righty, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Moretti to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two is written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Area five zero, departmental reports one through four.
Miranda moves to receive and file departmental reports one through four inclusive.
All righty, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Moretti to receive and file departmental reports one through four. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, communications from the mayor, number five. Mayor Iafal requests the city council pass the attached resolution showing the City of Lackawanna supports New York, uh, Senate Bill number S. As in SAM seven six zero two donor conceived per- uh, person protection bill.
Miranda moves to receive and file act on resolution.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Anderson to receive and file act on resolution. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, the resolution resolving that the City of Lackawanna fully supports the passage of New York State Senate Bill, S is in SAM seven six zero two. Sponsored by Senator Patrick M. Gallivan and supports further efforts to ensure both parents and donor conceived persons. Have access to verified medical, educational and criminal felony conviction histories for all donors.
Miranda moves to drop resolution as written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Anderson to adopt a resolution is written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, communications from Division Department Heads, number six. Director Recreation requests the city council award the two thousand twenty-two grass cutting and landscaping bid to Snowplow Doctor. With a submitted bid price of fifty-two thousand, two hundred dollars, which is estimated based on thirty cuts. Uh, any rejected bids are available for review in a city clerk's office.
Miranda moves to approve request.
All righty, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Moretti to approve request. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, number seven, DPW Commissioner, request the city council approve the attached proposed code enforcement fee update.
Miranda moves to approve request.
Second, Surtik.
Motion by Miranda, second by Surtik to approve request. Muflahi?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier four to one. Number eight, DPW Commissioner requests the city council approve that the City of Lackawanna partner with the City of Buffalo to pave Dorance Avenue between South Park Avenue and McKinley Parkway. Buffalo will be the lead agent. The City of Lackawanna's portion will be eighty-five thousand dollars.
Miranda moves to approve request.
All righty, second.
Their motion by Miranda, second by Moretti to approve request. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Five zero, number nine, Director of Public Safety requests the city council authorize the fire department to use the reserve pumper truck to participate in the Old First Ward St. Patrick's Day Parade in the City of Buffalo. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Miranda moves up for request.
All righty, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Moretti to approve request. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, number ten, Director of Public Safety requests the city council approve the first ever law enforcement torch run walk to benefit the Special Olympics of New York State. The two thousand twenty-two Lackawanna leg of the run walk will be held on Sunday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. With the registration at ten fifteen AM and the run walk commencing at eleven AM. The roof travel and other particulars are included and attached.
Muflahi moves to approve the request.
Anderson, second.
I have a motion by Muflahi, second by Anderson to approve request. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, number eleven, City Attorney requests the city council approve and authorize the execution of the attached memorandum of understanding regarding the K nine patrol officer. Complete text of MOU filed with the city clerk's office.
Miranda moves to approve request.
Second, Surtik.
The motion by Miranda, second by Surtik to approve request. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, number twelve, City Controller requests the city council approve the attached budget ordinance approving an interfund advance between the general fund and the capital fund to pay for the Dorance Avenue. Paving capital project as in, uh, referencing number eight by the DPW Commissioner above.
Miranda moves to receive and file an act on ordinance.
All righty, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Moretti to receive and file act on ordinance. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, that ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance adopted May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one by adding eighty-five thousand dollars. For the budget code for transfer to other fund capital appropriating eighty-five thousand dollars of the city's fund balance, adding eighty-five thousand dollars for the budget code of Dorance Avenue paving twenty twenty-two. And increasing the budget code for capital fund interfund transfers by eighty-five thousand dollars.
Miranda moves to adopt the ordinance as written.
All righty, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Moretti to adopt ordinance is written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, number thirteen, City Controller requests the city council approve the attached budget, budget ordinance to close out the Milnor and Keever. Paving capital project and return funds to the general fund. Project is now complete and the city has been reimbursed by CDBG grant block, uh, block grants totaling two hundred thousand dollars.
Miranda moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Anderson to receive and file act on ordinance. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, that ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance adopted May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one by increasing. The budget code for transfer from other fund capital by two hundred thousand dollars and increasing the city's fund balance by two hundred thousand dollars.
Miranda moves to adopt, uh, the ordinance as written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Anderson to adopt ordinance is written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, item number fourteen, communications from citizens, John Farrell, resident, West Falls, New York submits a communication to the city council. Expressing his concerns regarding a new policy at the Erie County Fair and further request that the city council submit their thoughts to the Erie County Agricultural Society.
Miranda moves to receive and file.
Muflahi, seconds.
Motion by Miranda, second by Muflahi to receive and file. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, we have the following business registrations, uh, Joseph Dear, uh, Joseph O'Durno doing business as Asset Recovery Bureau LLC, which is a collection agency at twelve, twelve Abbott Road. Suite C, Patjo Nersian doing business as Premium Lines Automotive Warehouse, which is the sale of auto parts at twelve, twelve Abbott Road. Robert Cephalou Junior doing business as Partners Packaging Inc., which is a wood shop and crate manufacturing company at twenty-six hundred Hamburg Turnpike. I have a Les Tru Truhilo doing business as Just Plan on an IT LLC, which is event planning, uh, twelve, twelve Abbott Road. Mahar Nasr doing business as Red Sea Market, a grocery store at fourteen forty-one Electric Avenue. And Michelle Wright Sands doing business as Lackawanna Self-Storage, which is a storage facility located at thirty-three eight zero South Park Avenue.
Muflahi moves to approve the aforementioned business registrations in total.
Miranda, seconds.
So I have a motion by Muflahi, second by Miranda to approve the aforementioned business registrations. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrier five zero, Mr. Council President?
Uh, members of the city council, any tabled items or old business anyone wishes to bring up at this point in time? If not, then, um, Miranda moves to adjourn.
All righty, second.
Motion by Miranda, second by Moretti to adjourn the meeting. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Three five zero, thanks, everybody.
Congratulations, Richard. Thank you.
Get your golf clubs ready.